Services, Emergency Management, Highway, Information Technology, Planning, Probation, Public Health, Office for the Aging, Recreation, Boarding Green Park, Real Property Tax Services, Solid Waste, Treasure, and Veterans Service Agencies which have been placed on file with according to board. That is all.
Thank you. Reports on standing committees. Ron, would you like to start with Finance and Rules?
Yeah, I don't have anything to say on Finance and Rules, but they do have a motion tonight. The, uh, motion to, uh, fill the vacant Information Technology Director's position.
Moved by Ron, second by Dick. Discussion.
You mean to start interviewing?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carries. Any questions for Ron? Now move on to Gary, General Services.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three motions. The first one is, is authorize Buildings and Grounds Supervisor Matt O'Connor to put out an RFP for asbestos removal and window replacement project at the Highway Garage.
Moved by Gary, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carries.
Second one is authorize Buildings and Grounds Supervisor Matt O'Connor to put out an RFP for siding project at the Highway Garage.
Moved by Gary, second by Andrea. Discussion.
No, does that, I have a question. The siding, is that covering the brick and windows?
Yeah, it'd be insulation. No, there'd be windows in there.
They're gonna take those glass block windows off of it?
Well, there's asbestos in them. Through, through the joints, so they'll be probably smaller. There's no need to have the bigger ones, but there'll be windows back in and then covered.
Frame, frame it and then?
Yep, and then covered with, uh, I think double insulation, two layers, like two inches and then, um...
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Okay, and to fill probation department, excuse me, to fill the probation director's position and associate backfill in the department due impending retirement effective immediately.
Moved by Gary, second by Andrea. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Any questions for Gary? Now move on to Randy with Health and Food Services.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report, but I do have two motions to put forth. First one is to authorize Public Health Director Ashley Waite to put out an RFP for transportation needs of children receiving preschool special education services due to upcoming contract expiration.
Moved by Randy, second by Ron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Second motion I have is to authorize Social Services Commissioner Jenny Jones to refill a full-time employment and training assistant due to a resignation effective immediately.
Moved by Randy, second by Phil. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Questions for Randy? Thank you, Randy. Dick, words, representative on the Hospital Board of Managers.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, the Employee of the Month for December is Sammy Hahn, LPM. If you see Sammy in the halls, congratulate her on her job well done. She's being elected for that. The second piece is quite enjoyable for me. The year-to-date gain, which is the year for this 2019, for the hospital is one hundred and ninety-one thousand six sixty-two above a break-even budget. Having MOUs to read in the past that we were gonna have to pay back four point eight million dollars, I'm really glad to be able to save that any. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Jerry Kair to speak on a couple of topics that he's gonna talk about.
Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you, may I approach the, the table? I have lots of things in my mind. I'm limited as how many things I can do at one time when I shuffle. I wanna take the opportunity, uh, to talk about, uh, a little bit of a storm that awaits us, um, on the critical access side of, of the health system. Um, and, and, you know, where I came from, uh, we were not a municipal hospital, so these sorts of things we would just talk, uh, I would report to, to the Board of Directors. Our meetings were not covered by the media, um, or other individuals. So, you know, the, this notion of talking in executive session was not something we did often. However, as you know, we're guided by the public officers law, and there are some restrictions on, on what I can bring to executive session. So, um, this is a topic that does not meet the qualification for executive session, which is why I gave a briefing to the Board of Managers. The briefing to the Board of Managers was somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five minutes long last week at their meeting. My goal is, in a five to eight-minute span, give you a, a very quick review of one of our challenges that is, that is forthcoming. And the reason I think that that is important behind you on the wall to, to the right here, um, you are seeing the, essentially the final drawings for the floor plans for the changes that we are proposing for the health system, and then you are also seeing the, um, the, um, the plans for how that looks on the current property. This project has to go through a certificate of need process, which, um, later this month at the HHS committee meeting, I will give you a deeper briefing on this project, which will include the schedule and projected cost for the project, because I will need the Board of Legislators' support, um, to move on with the process so we complete, so we can complete the certificate of need, but also remain open to bonding with the project. And we've, we've been having conversations over the last six months or so, you know, with periodic updates on, on the project. Also keep in mind, I recently, um, shared with my board the economic impact of Lewis County, um, in two thousand and nineteen. Our economic impact to the county was a hundred and fifteen million dollars on an eighty-three million dollar budget. We generated a thousand jobs. Um, our employees paid forty-nine million dollars in, um, excuse me, um, our payroll expenditures were forty-nine million dollars, and the tax dollars generated by our employees contributing to state federal taxes was eleven million dollars. So, this really speaks to our important role in the economic vitality of Lewis County, in addition to our most important role in providing health services. There are two other hospitals in the North Country that will be facing the same challenge we have, and that is Carthage and Governor. And when you put the three hospitals together, the potential impact is two hundred and twenty million dollars. So, healthcare is a very important part of the regional economy. So what is the, the challenge that we are working through? As you know, critical access was designated by CMS really to, to reduce the financial vulnerability of rural hospitals and improve access to healthcare. This designation was to help preserve access to healthcare in rural America, and Lewis County has benefited from that. Uh, those who came before me recognized the wisdom of pursuing critical access, and the team there has proceeded and managed that incredibly well. However, like most things, there are criteria you must meet to be in a program or to have a designation. And there are many, but the one that has, uh, jumped up most recently that has, has a bit concerned is there are mileage requirements between hospitals to be a critical access hospital. And Lewis County became a critical access hospital in two thousand and fourteen. In June of two thousand and twenty, we must recertify to be a critical access hospital. That's a hand, handful of months away from now. And up until two weeks ago was really not something we thought much about. We're a deemed status organization, which means when the Joint Commission visits us, the State of New York and the federal government recognizes that survey process. That's very important. However, there was a subtle change made in two thousand and fifteen, which changed the designation of what is considered a primary road. And State Route twenty-six is now considered a primary road within the U.S., um, let me get the exact language for you. State Route twenty-six is now considered a part of the National Highway System, which makes it a primary road. Now, in the critical access definition, a primary road stipulates that you must be at least thirty-five miles away from the nearest hospital. When State Route twenty-six was considered a secondary road, you only had to be fifteen miles away from the other hospital. So, we are fifteen point six miles from Carthage Area Hospital. So we met the definition, but the definition, if it's changed to primary, we are not even close to the thirty-five mile requirement. And then Carthage to Governor, so you can see how we're all sort of connected with these mileage, with this change in road impacting the mileage requirements. So, there are nine hospitals in New York State that are impacted by this. Out of the eighteen critical access hospitals, um, three of us are in the North Country and, in the very near term, must recertify. There are approximately seventy hospitals across the country. I can tell you that I'm a person who has a, a very positive and constructive relationship with Albany, specifically the Department of Health, and I have been incredibly impressed with, um, with how they've approached this challenge and how they are working with us in Lewis County and my colleagues in healthcare in other parts of the North Country to help find a resolution to this. Um, so they have been terrific. And I, as I've reported to my board, there, I truly believe there was no intentional design to reduce the number of hospitals. I think there was simply, uh, clarification on a definition in two thousand and fifteen without an understanding of how it would impact hospitals moving forward. And recently, a hospital applied for critical access status and they were denied. This was one of the reasons they were denied, which brought light to the issue, which allowed the Department of Health to actively engage and bring the rest of us, um, up to date on this. So, this is important because when I approach you as the, uh, our governing body which would approve the bond and we go through the certificate of need process, we have to be able to demonstrate our, our financial wherewithal to support the investment that would be made in this capital project. So, I'm here to tell you tonight, um, one, I wanted to give you a briefing, much shorter version than I gave the Board of Managers, so you didn't let the word on the street, um, influence you without knowing the facts. And two, to let you know that I, I believe we will get to the other end of this and will re, will be a critical access hospital for the long haul. But like anything, if you don't pay attention to the details and constructively work to make the change, then we could be on the short end of the stick. And I am very optimistic working with Haney's, working with Aricoi Health, working with the other seventeen, um, critical access hospitals, and specifically the eight who are impacted. We will successfully change this subregulation that was modified in two thousand and fifteen that just came to light. So, I really wanted to be transparent with you, let you know what's going on, but I feel like we have a good handle on it and are constructively working. I would like to say it's the number one priority, um, that I'm working on, but that wouldn't be fair to the other projects and initiatives that we have going. I would say it's in the list of the top twenty, and on some days it is, it is all of the focus, but then there are other days, you know, we have to allow the process to work and then we sit it back a little bit. So, are there any questions?
Yes. If, how, how does Carthage building a new hospital affect that with their location? Would that, would that be within the fifteen point six miles?
Yeah, I really can't speak to that because, um, my conversations with Carthage have been strictly on this point. Um, so, and, and I haven't asked, nor have I been briefed on their project. I know it's out there as a, a plan, but I'm not aware of, I truly don't know the details, so, yeah, it would be conjecture, not grounded in fact.
That happens a lot with me. But, hey, um, it just seems like it would be closer than their current location, and that's the reason?
No, I actually think that it's a little further away from us than, than the current hospital.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's, it's gonna be out near the high school.
Right.
And, so that's a little bit further than the fifteen point six, but not by a lot.
We should also point out that if they get too close, they jump right there, like, they kick it within fifty miles.
That's a good point. I didn't think about that.
So I'm sure they're gonna make sure they're more than fifty miles away.
Um, so, your words were just a little bit of a storm. Um, what, what would the dollar impact be, if, or don't you wanna say?
No, um, right now it's projected, um, and, um, with the help of the Critical Access Health Network, which is a group that comes together quarterly, and it's, it's, I mean, it's amazing, critical access hospitals share lots of information. You share financials, you share quality data, and, uh, so through that group, we were able to get that number for each of us. Lewis County's number is five point three million dollars projected annually. That would fundamentally change the services we could offer and could potentially impact our long-term viability. So, you know, Dick reported, we, we, we did a little better than budget this year, which was good, right? We exceeded our budget. But let's be honest, that, Dick, that number was, uh...
One ninety-one six sixty.
On an eighty-three million dollar budget. So, the team is doing a great job paying attention to the financials. We've saved a little bit of money because of the hard work of many, but when your margin is that narrow, five point three million dollars is a bit of a storm.
That's a bit of a storm.
Right. But it's a storm that is manageable, and because we're constructively proactive and there's no finger pointing, there's no blaming, because there's a fundamental belief that no one intentionally meant to do this. They were clarifying some definitions and somebody at a low administrative level just followed the rules and denied a hospital that requested critical access. So now let's work on changing the subregulation, and that's where we're putting our energy.
Actually, when you compare five million to eighty-three million, I guess it is a little bit of a storm versus just looking at five million dollars.
And the eighty-three, keep in mind, is not just the hospital, it includes the long-term care facility, it includes home health, it includes hospice, and the physician practices. So, and the hospital is just one portion of many service lines that make up the eighty-three million.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, please, um, reach out to Ryan or myself and we'll get you the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on list is the Community Managers' Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Easy.
Good sake.
You two make a good team.
They do well over at the county.
So, uh, I, I wanted to say a few words on the NISAC Conference and the state's budget, um, which was, uh, the executive budget was released last week, and, um, Randy and I got to spend a few days in Albany with our peers, um, throughout New York State Counties, uh, going over some of the budget implications and, uh, talking through what it will mean for us. Um, the number one thing that has come into budget this year, and again, we're gonna spend a lot more time at, um, with this at the Finance and Rules Committee, I'm hoping, um, on the eighteenth, but, uh, four billion dollars of the state's six billion dollar projected deficit is from Medicaid, uh, spending. And part of what was proposed in the Governor's Budget is to reverse, partially reverse, the Medicaid cap. And right now, if you look at our budget for the last five years, we have been capped at about five million dollars annually that we have to pay for our county's share of Medicaid, which by the way, we're the only county in this, uh, the only local governments in the United States that have to pay for a portion of Medicaid is New York State. But we've paid about five million dollars. Um, the state is proposing to peel back that cap and hold counties responsible for any growth over three percent. So, uh, Jenny's team has been working hard to understand the implications of that because the state has not been clear, but, um, we are coming to a consensus with some of the other counties in the way to approach this problem. And, uh, we went back four years, and over four years, that would be a one point three million dollar cost shift to Lewis County. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, it would have been a four hundred and nineteen thousand dollar cost shift to Lewis County, which is about a four point six percent tax increase. So, we're not dealing with big margins because we're under, we're also under the, the state's two percent tax cap. So, um, when you start talking about half a million dollars, that's not something we can easily come up with. Um, so, this is something that we are going to want to fight, we're going to want to be heard on. Um, in fact, NISAC is putting together an advocacy day in Albany, um, on February twelfth, which is next Wednesday. Um, we can organize , uh, transportation down for any legislator that would like to join us. They are going to do a briefing for all, um, county officials with a breakfast, uh, in Albany, and then they rented, um, a series of suites, and so they're gonna have the elected officials, um, in the Assembly and the Senate come to us. That's what the plan is. So they'll give us a briefing and then they'll invite the, um, our Assemblymen and Senators and, and some that aren't, uh, representing counties. You know, this is, uh, it's not enough just to talk to, um, Assemblyman Blankenbush and Senator Griffo, um, because we already know that they support us. We have to make sure that, um, we get other folks that represent the city in Long Island. We have to make sure we, we reach them as well. Um, so NISAC is helping to set that up. They're inviting all the county officials down, um, to participate in that on the twelfth. So, if you're interested, let Cassandra know, uh, let myself know, and we'll try to carpool, um, and get, and get a group down. I will certainly attend, um, on that day. Uh, the other thing that's in the state budget that is to be aware of is the second year in a row that they have put, um, the legalization of, or I should say, decriminalization of recreation marijuana, recreational marijuana in the state budget. The state is counting on that revenue in order to balance the budget. So, um, they put a little more pressure, uh, this year on the Senate than they did last year by actually counting on the revenue. Um, for us, you know, we, the way they have it written so far is we would get two percent of, um, the sales generated in our county, and the reason that, um, besides the, you know, the legalization issue, which I'm sure many of you have opinions on, um, the two percent is not good because on a normal sale of a bagel or a gallon of gas, we get four percent. So, um, they're restricting the amount that is going to counties that is less than, um, you know, a regular purchase of sales tax. So, that's not something that is, um, that is in our favor, uh, either. So, um, those are the two big things, but I'll, like I said, we'll go over it in more detail on the eighteenth. Um, Ag Sustainability Council has been meeting now for about six months. They've been doing wonderful work. Um, John Lehman was attending those meetings, um, but we don't have a legislator that has attended until last month, um, since John has been, um, been off the board. So, if someone would like to attend or multiple, you guys are more than welcome. We have great attendance, we have good discussions, and we've actually come up with some, some good policy ideas that are gonna start filtering to the board over the next couple of months. Some dealing with solar, some dealing with some other tax policy. So, good stuff for, is coming out of that. Um, our next meeting is February fourteenth, it's a Friday, at nine o'clock at the new JCC building in the conference room. So, um, all legislators are obviously more than welcome to attend.
We always set up on the same day, right?
What's that?
We always set, set up on a certain day, third Friday of the month.
I think that it is. Um, I just don't know what that date is. Whatever this one is, I think is, is how we do it. So it might be the third Friday, yeah. Yep. Um, in addition to that, we have on February eighteenth, uh, one thing that's come out of these Ag Sustainability Councils are, um, like I said, some solar and land use training. Farmers are getting inundated with requests for, from solar developers. And so, uh, the Planning Department, working with Cornell Cooperative Extension, working with State Ag and Markets, is putting together a forum for, um, farmers and landowners in Lewis County that are, are hearing from solar developers. So that will be on February eighteenth. Uh, we're doing two sessions, one at one o'clock and one at six o'clock. So unfortunately, it's the same day as our committee meetings, but, um, maybe we get out at six o'clock if you guys are interested in, um, in hearing of, uh, some of what we put together on that. Um, as Cassandra noted, your, your annual reports from the Department heads are in your mailboxes. Um, March third, uh, we have the crew from JCC coming in, the annual community survey, so that's gonna be an early meeting. We'll ask you if you wanna participate in that to be here at four o'clock, uh, for next month's board meeting. And, um, as Jerry had mentioned, um, we do have a final candidate for the, um, probation director position, but we do need to get a waiver from the State of New York. Um, so we didn't bring it forward tonight because we wanna make sure we have that in hand before we make the appointment. Uh, Mary Jo doesn't retire until the end of March, so we can make the appointment, um, next month.
Well, where are you looking at?
So, um, in order to take the position of probation director in New York State, it's on, that position is only eligible to people who are all, who have been a probation supervisor. Uh, because our department is so small, we don't have a probation supervisor. We only have five people, so we don't have that extra layer of supervision. So we just need a waiver from the state that says, uh, we don't have to have a probation supervisor. So, that's what we're waiting for. It shouldn't be a problem, it's just we, we don't have it in hand today, so that's why we didn't do the appointment, so.
You predict it to be in hand by next month, right? Or will it be like the, the Assistant DA position?
This should be a little easier because we don't need any legislative action. We just need a, a signed letter on the letterhead from, um, Bob Macaron, who is the, um, in charge of probation and community corrections in New York State. So I hope that it is not that hard. Uh, Randy and I saw him last week at NISAC, and I put a bug in his ear about it, and he certainly knows Mary Jo, she's been around for, um, a long time. So, um, I don't anticipate that's gonna be a problem. I hope not.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Report, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've provided you a two-page report, um, similar to what you've received in the past on activity and balances, and this is intended to reflect those balances as of February first. Just a really quick, uh, some quick highlights of that report. Um, your special legislative contingency starts out, um, the year two thousand and twenty with a balance of one hundred thousand dollars. The regular contingency fund starts with a balance of two hundred thousand dollars, and you did, um, appropriate ten thousand from that in December, so it's now at one hundred and ninety thousand. Capital data processing moves forward a balance of forty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-one. Capital equipment, um, moves forward a balance of two hundred and sixty thousand four hundred dollars into two thousand and twenty. And both of those, um, reserves have appropriations in front of you tonight, um, for two thousand and twenty, um, funding. At the bottom of the first page, you'll see our summary of sales tax collection. For two thousand and nineteen, we have collected to date twelve million four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. There is still, um, small payments to be received, um, in the month of February that will be part of two thousand and nineteen funding.
Yes, Eric, I got a question for you. Since you're right on that sales tax.
Yes.
Uh, December, do you, do you have an idea why we're that much lower than for two thousand and nineteen versus two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, I cannot definitively answer that, Greg, but we do have, um, additional payments in February. Uh, my experience, I don't have the experience to know if they're going to make up that difference, so I'll, I'll have to wait and see what those payments are. But we do have additional payments to come in February.
That's a pretty big deficit.
Sales tax, tax runs, when we, we get it, first you pay to the state, then the state pays it to us. It's a month, month and a half behind, so that's not a full December number. That's...
That's the, we still have no receipts to come in.
I'll see if I can follow up on that a little bit more and get some information back to you. Okay, thank you. So, I mean, with that in balance today, and again, with some additional funding to come, we are over our budget, um, for twelve, for twenty nineteen. The new budget was at eleven million five hundred thousand dollars. And on the second page is a summary of activity, um, in our Internal Service Fund, and you will see a balance as of the end of December. Uh, cash balance in that fund is five million three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And again, I mean, that fund has been healthy, and, um, that is a topic of regular discussion at our, uh, Health Insurance Committee meeting. Any questions on those? That will be my best answer.
Question, Eric. Thank you, Eric. Reporter, the Financing Rules Committee, through Rule seven, Sandra.
Thank you, Chief Justice Chairman. The Finance and Rules Committee reports that they have examined the claims presented for payment in the total amount of one million four hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, and recommend that they be audited and allowed for the amounts claimed.
Need a motion? Moved by Randy, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Go ahead.
Um, the first resolution, auditing and allowing claims in the amount of one million four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Moved by Randy, second by Greg. Is gotten. Call, call, please.
Hathaway.
Yes.
Burns.
Yeah.
Chardren.
Yes.
Cullser.
Yes.
Legislator Osborne has been excused. Legis- Wischold.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Morahan.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Dahlhoff.
Yes.
Local law introductory number one dash twenty twenty, local law amending local law number nine, two thousand nineteen, providing for the partial exemption of certain real property owned by persons sixty-five years of age or over. And fixing the date of public hearing on local law introductory, local law number one dash twenty twenty.
Moved by Bill, second by Greg. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Local law intro number two dash twenty twenty, a local law regulating and permitting specialty events on county roads, trails, or other county property. And fixing the date of public hearing on local law intro number two dash twenty twenty.
Moved by Jerry, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, capital buildings and grounds.
Moved by Andrea, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, capital county road striking.
Moved by Randy, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries.
Resolution to transfer and appropriate funds, capital data processing.
Moved by Jerry, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, capital equipment.
Moved by Randy, second by Jerry. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution authorizing renewal of lease agreement between County of Lewis and Cornell Cooperative Extension of Lewis County.
Moved by Ian, second by Randy. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution appointing member to Development Authority of the North Country.
Moved by Greg, second by Dick. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution amending compensation plan of County of Lewis with reference to District Attorney Office.
Moved by Greg, second by Jerry. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, on the advice of the County Attorney, I'd like to note my abstention on the vote, stealing the DA's office, rather than calling it out for each one, due to a conflict of interest.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, showing abstaining.
Resolution amending compensation plan of County of Lewis with reference to District Attorney Office.
Moved by Greg, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, showing abstaining.
Resolution to transfer funds, District Attorney.
Moved by Greg, second by Jerry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, showing abstaining.
Resolution authorizing supplemental agreement number one between Lewis County Highway Department and Engineering Services of Barton Le Judas for the High Market Road over North Branch, Ri- Sugar River.
Moved by Bill, second by Ron. Discussion. He said, get your wall of all the word. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution authorizing agreement between County of Lewis and Stan Tech Consulting Services to provide professional engineering design, construction management, and administration for a new above-ground fuel storage system at the Lewis County Highway Department.
Moved by Andrea, second by Jerry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution appointing member to the Planning Board.
Moved by Bill, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, Planning Department.
Moved by Ian, second by Randy. Discussion.
Yeah, Jerry, this is the fund that we're left over, right? Left over from, uh, two thousand nineteen.
Greg, you explain that.
So, uh, are they earmarked already?
These are our non-programmed funds from CDVG that were, uh, paid back to the, to the program over a period of years. Uh, we're allowed to use these funds for a community development project outside of the normal CDVG program. So they're considered non-programmed funds.
So are they already earmarked?
They, they are to the, if you approve tonight, they are to the Planning Department for, uh, community projects.
No, I mean, are you already have this money spent on projects?
We do not. We've made some recommendations to, uh, to the county manager, we've had some discussions, and, uh, but none have been appropriated to any, uh, organization or any agency yet.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution authorizing a renewal agreement between the County of Lewis on behalf of the Lewis County Probation Department and Capital District Youth Center.
Moved by Jerry, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, Public Health Department.
Moved by Bill, second by Andrea. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution authorizing an agreement with Fort Drum Regional Health Planning Organization in Lewis County Public Health to accept a grant award for prevention and management of chronic disease.
Moved by Jerry, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to urge delay of new lead poisoning regulations due to an unworkable timeline and exorbitant cost.
Moved by Dick, second by Bill. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Urging New York State Department of Health and New York State Division of Budget to require providers to ma- maximize reimbursement from all third-party payers.
Moved by Jerry, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Urging Governor Andrew Cuomo and New York State Legislature to improve early intervention programs to better serve children and families through reforms to address lack of available providers in many areas of the state.
Moved by Jerry, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries.
Resolution to transfer funds, trails maintenance.
Moved by Ron, second by Andrea. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, E nine one one.
Moved by Greg, second by Jerry. Discussion.
Is that annual, Jerry? Is this something we get every year, or?
Yeah, this comes out, there are certain piles of money we get, and you can use it for certain things. This one was, uh, the E nine one one.
It's a being, it's a being, it's kind of trick.
This one, no.
Well, this was the YF Johnson one.
C nine one one would have might have come out.
This is equipment. But that's a, that's a yearly thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all it is.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries.
Resolution to transfer funds, E nine one one.
Moved by Ron, second by Ian. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds for Social Services Department.
Moved by Randy, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, Social Services Department.
Moved by Ron, second by Bill. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, Social Services Department.
Moved by Greg, second by Randy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to appropriate funds, Solid Waste Department.
Moved by Ron, second by Greg. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution authorizing agreement between Lewis County Solid Waste Department and Barton Le Judas.
Moved by Andrea, second by Ron. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution appointing administrator of Lewis County Self-Insurance Plan.
Moved by Greg, second by Dick. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution to transfer funds, WEOWA.
Moved by Jerry, second by Randy. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carries. It's a strange acronym, WEOWA, WEOWA law.
For Force Investment Opportunity Act.
Resolution to appropriate funds for Youth Bureau.
Moved by Dick, second by Randy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution in support of Fort Drum's designation as a fourth Army Corps headquarters.
Moved by Ron, second by Dick. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Resolution appointing member to Lewis County Industrial Development Agency Board of Directors.
Moved by Andrea, second by Randy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. So, other business. I announced JCC Center for Community Studies will present their two thousand and nineteen county survey results to legislators before clock, at Tuesday, March third. I already noted that. And other business, Dick?
Yeah, the FDRLO, which kind of changed their name to Advocate Drum. If you go into their website, you can sign a petition there as well, and they would like us to that if we individually go in there. They'd like to get as many individual signatures as well as, as the legislature does. So, if you just go in there on the internet to advocate drum, there's a place to sign for them. I encourage you to do it, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Dick, second? Randy? All in favor?
Aye.
You weren't against that?
Yeah.
Aye.